Committee of the whole to order. And please take attendance.
Mr. Moravka, Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Mark.
Sure.
Mr. Hamm.
Mr. Bowden.
Here.
Mr. Hamm.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the November 27th, 2017 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Not a motion to accept?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Bowden, second by Trustee Jones.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
And President Croft.
Yes.
Yes. Oh, I'm so sorry. Mr. Mark. Then I didn't need you.
Yes, see. All right, public comment.
You want to wait for Jim?
I'll wait for Jimmy.
Okay, Jim's coming.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Well, we'll move on to item five, discussion regarding section 150 dot 038, the appearance of exterior buildings and building materials. So at the last meeting, you know, we passed, come on in. The last meeting, you know, we passed a resolution suspending that ordinance for the time being. And I thought maybe we could just have a little bit of a discussion here and then kind of decide if we want to send this to the Building Committee or if we wanted to handle it as a Committee of the Whole. Pretty much how we're going to go forward. So really what we did was we suspended the ordinance that strictly talked about the exterior appearance. And that ordinance required in any new subdivision planted after a certain date, either the first floor was all brick or some other kind of masonry, hardy board type building material. And so right now, like I said, we've suspended that. We kind of have to come up with a plan. We left the anti-monotony portion in place, which I think is important, just to stay away from that cookie cutter type housing.
You know, I think we should do it as a whole group. And I also would like to get a list of all the things that were included in those restrictions.
Okay.
Because just thinking back, I don't know, five, eight years or whatever it was. Now, that went all the way from, you had to sod the yard was part of that because we had some people that never, they'd let the weeds grow and then they just cut the weeds. It included a concrete driveway, not gravel or blacktop or dirt or nothing. It included the masonry on the first floor or acceptable product. I can't remember if it included architectural shingles or not versus a standard shingle. The roof vents had to match the roof as opposed to a bunch of silver tin cans sitting up there. No warfin windows. We were having houses built with either no windows on the sides or maybe one just stuck up there. 360 degree architecture, I think was the reference. The garages had to be drywalled. You couldn't just have the fiber board and then the studs.
And I'm not sure what part of that was in the anti-monotony.
No, anti-monotony was strictly for building plan and a location. Nothing on either side that was the same. Nothing across the street that was the same. And I'm not sure if it was the kitty corner from the house or not. But that was a totally different thing.
Different, yes.
But there were a lot of things in there. And we should either say yes to which ones we want or no or modify it. But without that baseline.
Right.
It's tough to.
Just, let's get everybody a copy of the ordinance. And then we can kind of sit down, take a look at it, highlight, you know, what.
I think there was a thing there too. It wasn't for the exterior though. It was on the interior. If you went through some of the, for lack of a better term, lower end subdivisions in different locations, they had big signs up, huge limit. And what that meant was there was no casings on doors, windows, space board.
You just do no known or completes.
Right.
Yeah.
And a lot of people, oh yeah, we'll get to that and then.
Yeah, that was a sweat equity thing they were trying to solve at one point where they would, actually New Orleans got caught up in that. Now, one subdivision that's on the east side or west side of Larry Way Road there, or south side, I'm sorry, Larry Way Road is they let them do the U-completes for sweat equity. And some of those turned out to be really hideous. They let them do exterior, interior, all kinds of stuff.
Well, the builder was just trying to cut costs.
Yeah.
Make a lower price product.
All those things that you mentioned are within pretty much everybody now that learned from those mega builders. That's pretty much in everybody's ordinance. The only thing that's not is the exterior brick. I mean, the first floor brick. Sometimes they have it, sometimes don't. Everything else, I think, is really fair to say, especially the anti-monotony and the sod. I mean, the sod is crucial, especially the front yard and the side yard, I think. Because that's just, if you don't have it.
Some never had it.
Some never had, you know. And then obviously the sidewalks and the completion of all that. And take escrows for that. If it's, if they finish up the house in November, they're not going to put sod in, but take the escrow. So in spring they put the sod and get their escrow back.
Right.
You know, but yeah, that's all, I mean, I think that's all wise. I really do.
When you start cutting construction costs for people to do it themselves, basically what that says is, I mean, there are people that could do it, but not many. They're looking for low price, low price, low price, which will continue probably through the spectrum of.
Yeah, those owner complaints are pretty much gone by the wayside anyway, I think. A lot of them. But I mean, if you have a builder that just puts cheap crap in there too, that's your other problem.
I think one of the things that we should address too is, you know, the quality of the siding, the vinyl.
Well, you know, and I can argue that point from the standpoint of, vinyl came about because it's quick and it's inexpensive. And anybody that's worked with somebody for half a day thinks they can hang it. And there's not much difference between good vinyl and cheap vinyl. In fact, they measure that stuff in thousandths of an inch. If you don't know what you're looking at, I don't know that you know what you're looking at. And the biggest thing with vinyl is a person that knows how to hang vinyl will have a pretty good looking project and it'll look good. But you drive down the street and look at especially two-story houses and you'll see big bubbles in the summertime when it heats up of, you know, and it's, oh, that just does that. Well, the reason it does that is because that stuff expands and contracts. And if you, when you put that up, if you don't allow the right tolerances, that's what creates that situation. So it's the installation. But people will look for the lowest price on the installation. They'll slap that stuff up and hey, it looks great today and they're gone. And you get this effect.
Or it falls off.
Do I?
Or it falls off.
Well, that's the other thing with vinyl. You know, you get a big windstorm, and I had this happen. And it shredded a second story. I mean, it was a big windstorm, but nonetheless, you can't patch that in. You can patch it in, but the UV rays have discolored.
Right.
So if you patch it in, it looks bad, which means the whole side. And insurance companies will argue, well, you know, we can patch this in. There's not that much of a fade effect or whatever. The other thing too, on first floors, especially if you got two or three kids and they're out there playing ball. And I mean, who didn't use the back of their house for a backstop when you were pitching, you know? And that first floor gets beat up and broken. Or the lawnmower hits it or throws stuff into it or the garbage cans. It takes abuse, especially at the first two or three feet. And so if you have a masonry product or a product that's durable, it'll look that way 100 years from now. You know what I mean? Second story, yeah, you can get away with it, you know? But those are my thoughts on it. I mean, it's, and the other thing, when you look at people and say, well, the cost, the cost, the cost. Most people I think that are going to build a new home are going to be a second or third time homeowner, which means they probably should have a pretty hefty downstroke. They've built up equity. So if you take the slight additional cost of some of these things we're talking about, it stretches over a 30-year mortgage. It's pretty minimal. And the value of the houses will go up more. The better houses will increase faster. Everything kind of snowballs as far as, as that goes. My point being on the second or third time home buyer, they got a chunk to put down. They're going to build a $250,000 house. Maybe they put down $40,000 or $70,000, whatever. So they're financing a smaller amount. That's my two cents, right?
Anybody else have any thoughts at this time? What I like to do is like by March, you know, have this figured out.
We extended it six months?
Six months.
Yeah.
But I mean, before we get into better weather, building, more building type stuff, I'd like to get it, get it done. So if we're going to handle it, you know, as a group, you know, we'll talk about it again in February at the Committee of the Whole. And, you know, hopefully maybe come to a good resolution at that point in time. So we'll get everybody, all the information that we have in writing right now and take a look at it before that meeting and bring it back.
Can we, I mean, I know we don't have to go by what our neighbors do, but can we just see what, you know, Beecher and Mantino and Manhattan require?
Sure.
Out of curiosity.
See how we compare against them?
Yeah.
Because, yeah, I mean, it's a competitive building market.
Can we make those contacts?
We don't want to be overly restrictive. At the same time, we don't want cookie cutter stuff.
Right.
And I think if we're, you know, if we're competitive, we should attract.
Makes sense, good idea.
I mean, I guess the other thing, I mean, you know, we come up with these, you know, new guidelines or keep the old ones or combination, but the other thing we got the whole thing. What's the date? I mean, what are we going to, how are we going to handle stuff that's been plotted already? That's another decision we got to come up with.
Well, I think right now everything that's out there, Meyer Glen has their own covenants. So, I mean, they still require, I believe, the hardy board, masonry, brick. I mean, that's their own thing. Westgate 3 and everything before that was pre this ordinance. So really at this time, the only, the only lots that were covered by this ordinance that we put the hold on, you know, were the lots on Ranch Road and a few on Hummingbird.
Was Westgate 3 not included in that? Because I thought.
Westgate 3 was, but the board in 2013.
Right.
By resolution.
Took them out.
Took them out.
Can we flip that back?
I don't think so.
Okay. Because that was the thing, because things were rolling.
Right.
And two was about halfway and we wanted to get things in place prior to three.
The problem where you're rolling back two, because in 2007 they built six or seven homes.
Right.
Outside of the ordinance.
Right.
That was in place. You didn't change the ordinance until 13, I think it was.
Well, the board, yeah, previous board, yeah, 13.
You can't retro that, so those eight are left. And then whatever's after that has to be.
Kind of did that with the hold right now, actually. I mean, the way you did it right now, I think.
That's something we'll have to talk, you know, maybe with legal about too. How the ordinance can be.
Yeah. You know, somebody's got a hole in their ground, they got a plan, we would probably do it. No, let it go. But if it's, you know, something else that was, I think, part of that thing was we limited garage size to, well, I don't know how many feet. But I think there needs to be an exception made to that if, and I'm not talking about filling a lot with garage, but, you know, in some of these bigger lots and whatever, and we come at these cars before that guys are spending big money for. Well, some of these guys are building garages that match the house that are beautiful. I mean, the same architecture, the same roof lines, the same everything. And if you wanted to put up a four-car garage and he had the room, and I don't know how we make an allowance for that. I mean, we don't want some metal shed back there that somebody, you know.
Right.
And, yeah, pull the car. But if it was, you got to have, I guess, a whole set of criteria for that. But there are places that where guys do have that, you know. I don't know, we're going to draw a lot of them, but.
Right.
For the guy that wants to.
Well, then we'll, we'll come back in February, you know.
If you can get the, the list of everything that's on that prior to.
No, we will. We'll get that to everybody.
It'll be this week.
Yeah, this week.
I got it on my desk.
Everybody's, everybody's boxes.
Because I had pulled it from my own education.
Good. Very good, all right. I think we have.
Aqua.
Yep. Aqua's here to give us an update on what is happening.
Do you need the map? Is it the systems map? Yeah, sure. Did you want it?
Yeah.
All right, we'll scan it in and we can copy that. No, this is the one you gave me, the potential sites for.
Oh, I thought it was this.
Bring in and in to.
Oh, when we met.
Yeah.
Okay, with Keith, okay.
We better update it.
Okay.
This, yeah, this, I'm Jim Belada with Aqua. Keith Mulholland, he's also at Aqua.
Can you spell that for me?
And Keith's our regional engineer, their head engineer for Aqua Illinois. So the reason I brought Keith here with us is we're talking water extension. To get the, the idea is, as I mentioned before, we're working to get the high-quality water here prior to January 1st of 2020. So the sooner we get in, we figure the better. Let the residents get used to it before the, for the increase hits too. So understand, hey, there's a, there's definitely a real quality here, a big difference. So I could give you an update of where we're at there. And I'll get it handed over to Keith and just kind of get an idea of where we're at with the project. So I know we've, we've met Greg and we met Robinson Engineering too as well. Keith will go a little bit for their details, so. But I'll just kind of give you an update of where we're at right now with the ICC. So February 6th is the staff direct testimony. What I mean by staff is the Illinois Commerce Commission staff. So Aqua submitted its testimony. They've had it for probably five, six weeks. They'll have been asking us questions through what they call data requests. They'll have their direct testimony on February 6th, which is good. After that is February 20th is the next status hearing. So hopefully both parties agree. I agree, we agree with their testimony. And we can move it forward to an evidentiary hearing if everything goes well. But it's okay, we got, we're doing good on time, but it's moving forward. We have not had any really reason to think that there's going to be any issues. Pretty standard stuff. The ICC worked with us very much upfront. They get this done, especially with the rate freezes and the holes that we had. So create a little complication, but they've been great. We worked through it and we're moving forward. So I still feel confident that we will be closed, you know, prior to June 1st. So moving forward. We're ahead of the Mantino schedule, so they're not going to get in the way. We'll be done before they get done, so, which is okay, which is good. How's about that? So we had a meeting scheduled with, with Jim and Garrett from the water and wastewater department. Got rescheduled, something came up with Jim. So we have it tentatively rescheduled for the 25th. I believe that's this week, isn't it? The 25th? So we'll know tomorrow. It's just, I guess Garrett was off today, so Jim wanted to confirm with him on that. So what we're going to do is have them come out to our Aqua offices, give them a tour of our facility and just meet most of the guys and who their boss would be if they, I think really the big question is really Garrett more than anything, whether he's willing to come over or not. We're not going to really talk any details on benefits or anything like that. We'll bring him over to the plant and then we'll talk to Mike Stone. I wanted to talk to some guys that, for example, Keith that was on, well, you were the public sector for the most part. We had a lot of guys that came over from the public sector here with Aqua. They could ask questions straight up. You like it, was it worth it? You know, the good, the positive and negative. So I'm a little different with Jim because of the situation where he's really your employee, but we hope that when he does retire, that he'll stay with us, you know? So he'll, he'll have a couple of years under him, but that's, he'll do well. And then one of the things, a few things I've been working with Greg, getting together with him, at least on a bi-weekly basis, sometimes even more frequently, we're going to start doing surveys, getting ready for a close. We're starting to get the building information put together. Working with Greg on that. And then one thing I know we talked about, I think we should probably look to at least narrow it down to a week or a couple of weeks of doing another open house, educational open house. Kind of talk maybe March-ish or so.
That'd be good.
Okay, so maybe there's any suggestions on dates and location? We can maybe do the school again or if there's another.
I think the school probably would be the, you know, that Commons area.
Yeah, that worked out really well. All the people spread out, plenty of parking.
Yeah.
Hopefully in March, the weather, you know.
Let's come up with a few dates and then I can run them by the school then too.
Okay, maybe you and I touch base on it and that sounds good. So I know we have one, tentatively have one planned in a neighboring community in March, I'm sorry, February 15th, so it'll be after that, be great.
Okay.
Jim? We briefly discussed maybe having you come to the Chamber of Commerce meeting and like a breakfast meeting.
Sure.
And they were very receptive of that. They thought that'd be a good idea. No dates were set or anything, but you think that'd be a possibility?
Sure, absolutely.
Real informal, you just kind of, you know, Dr. March gave a presentation one time. The eye doctor did, and this would be kind of professional.
I'd love to, and then the people can ask questions too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd probably be somewhere between 10 and 20 people.
Yeah, that'd be great. And any other groups that you guys, social groups, would like for us to get in front of? And even more in front of the, I like that, working part of the community and especially in, you know, light of January 2020 when they're going to see it in the bill that want to make sure everybody's educated on it, so.
Good.
If there's any other questions for me, I'll hand it over to Keith and he can give me an update of where we're at.
I have one more. Mark Mostert, the billboard man, he's been doing that forever. And he's been interested in putting a billboard out by 57 on the easement that we have. And we've talked about it a little bit. And I've been talking to him for, I don't know, a couple of years, I guess. And just kind of sketching out a few things. And he does this all over. He lives up in Moni, I believe. And he agreed to, for the privilege of doing that, pay us $1,000 a month for eternity for letting him do that. And he agreed to a lit sign underneath his billboard where we could say whatever we want. Welcome to Peatone, whatever. And that would be lit too on the billboard. And then he called me again today and I said I'd bring it up tonight. And I thought it might be a good idea if maybe we sat down with Jim and us and Mark, see what his thoughts were. Obviously, we don't want to screw up the, where the water goes through, but that whole thing, to kind of get a, a thing going together. Do you think that'd be a good idea?
I mean, we can always.
The one we need to be careful of is if we do get the project over there, they're going to want signage. And we're going to have to get permission from the state of Illinois. And I don't want anything blocking their signage. I got to be able to guarantee them clear view.
Who's signage?
Any development. Any development that goes there.
Oh, I think, well, I don't, you have to talk, I think he wants it on the east side of it.
Okay.
But he's been working with the county. There's a lot of hoops they got to jump through to be able to do that. But just sit down and have a dialogue.
We can, we can definitely have a conversation. That's, that's not a problem.
So we set that up and then give you a call, see if you can work that in, Jim or.
Yeah, sure, let me know. So yeah, that's more for crossing the 57 for us, getting on the other side.
Right.
Okay, well, thank you. As Jim mentioned, my name is Keith Mulholland. I've been with Aqua for a couple of years now. And excited to be working with some towns close to home. I mentioned earlier this morning that I like Jim because he gets acquisitions near our house. Brandon gets them like four hours away. It's nice to, you know, it's a nice fit for us in our system. We do have the new Peatone, our University Park water main has been in service since November, so has been going very well. And we really want to bring the water to you guys sooner than January of 2020. So one of the things that we were brainstorming in our office is the fact that maybe the village could help assist us with securing the rights of way for this water main that we're putting in. We can't expend the funds on it because it's outside of our certificate area and we don't have the Peatone system yet. However, if we hit the ground running, by the time the system closes, if we can have the right of way for our project secured or close to being secured, we can actually start improvement plans. Our goal is to even have it bid out this year. And construction either started this winter or first thing in the spring. So what we've, with the 14-mile water main we ran to University Park, probably our biggest challenge was securing the right of way. People don't always react well with a corporation like we are. The pipelines have come through this area, the airport, the state's buying property. So we've had a lot of pushback from different factions because of those things. But as a village, you guys are friendly, right? People like villages. They want to develop their property. They want to make it worth more because now they'll have water main available to serve their site, whereas right now they don't. So one of the things we were talking about is we can't expend the funds for property outside of our certificate area. But if we were to partner with the village on this, we would be able to reimburse the village for expenses in regards to these property acquisitions. I actually had Robinson order title searches on both sites of, we want to come in on Beecher Road. Okay, we've had, I just think the county's going to be a little bit easier entity to work with than maybe some of the townships. We, we did work with them with our UP line, but the county roughly feel is a better fit for us. And then rather than coming over to Route 50, which is chock full of utilities, it's going to be very difficult to cross, we'd like to go down Hawthorne and through that subdivision, tie in down on Corning, where you guys do have a 12-inch water main right now. So what that would do is you guys have a nice sized water main on the west side by your tower. You have a nice sized water main on Corning, and then we would have one on the east side of town. So first, you know, we'd have three of the four parts of the village looped with a large water main. Again, it depends now, we drove the route the other day and the power poles are set further back from the county. The farmed areas are set further back, so there's a possibility there's some right of way through there. But I doubt it's going to extend all the way from Egyptian over to Hawthorne. We would also like to use Robinson Engineering as our engineer for the project. What we normally do is we try to partner with municipals engineers because one, they know you guys, they know your ordinances and what you guys expect out of a project. Generally, it makes it easier. We don't try to put them in that position where they're working for like a developer and then they've got to wear two hats. I mean, we really abide with whatever the village ordinances are. They're more familiar with it. So a couple of things that we would like to do is, again, one, partner with the village about starting and securing the right of way where we would reimburse the village for any costs associated, attorney, engineering, easement costs. And then also the ability to use Robinson as the engineer for our project just because they're familiar with how you guys operate and what you guys look for in projects.
So basically looking, going from Egyptian Trail down Peatone Beecher Road just down to Hawthorne, so that's about.
It's a couple of miles.
Yeah, about two miles.
So what we, what we did with the UP line was for all the farmed parcels, we have an agricultural impact mitigation agreement, which we would offer to the same property owners on this one. And what that requires, we have to have an agricultural inspector on site in addition to our engineering onsite. So it just, you know, we would basically be offering the same, take a step back. So a group of property owners on our UP line formed together, made a group and hired Jerry Quick, an attorney out of Quad Cities, to represent them. And we would be offering that same deal to the property owners on this route. So it's higher, the amount we reimburse for the easements is more than our land appraisal study showed. Had more terms and special conditions, but if that's, you know, we're willing to offer that upfront to these property owners just to make it easier because why go through the hassle of them hiring another attorney when an attorney's already been hired, has already worked out a deal with property owners? And we would just accept that to these people as well.
How many parcels do you?
There's not that many. There's probably only about four or five regardless of which side of the road we go on. So there's larger parcels. You start to get into the smaller parcels as you get closer to Route 50. But again, we would hope to turn south before that. So there's only probably four or five that we would need, really.
You chose it on that map, Victor, by the way.
Yeah, this, what this map shows is we, we've looked at a couple of different possibilities for coming into town. Again, both the Corning Avenue, Corning Road or Corning Avenue. The only disadvantage to the north route was that we didn't have a good tie-in to get to a larger main within your system. But if we come down Hawthorne and work our way around Wesley or Hickory, you do have a 12-inch right here that extends all the way to the west. So, this would be our tie-in point, and then we also could, like I said, avoid Route 50. I guess you guys are having some work done on Route 50, and Van told me that the utilities are pretty brutal, there's just not much room there.
There's not.
Yeah, it is tight.
So, this just seemed like a good fit, you know, to go across Route 50, you'll have a nice-sized main on the east side of town, you have one on the south already, and you have one on the west. So, again, the village, you're already well on your way to having a looped system within your community.
How much money are you talking about us fronting you?
You wouldn't have to front us, we would pay for everything. So, we would basically, if you guys were to get an invoice from, let's say you allow us to work with Robinson and they were securing our property, they would just send us the bill.
Oh, so there's no timeline?
There would be no timeline. The only timeline would be?
Pay for it.
No, I guess if your attorney has input, they can bills directly as well. So, we would just take those bills, and so there wouldn't be any lifetime for the village. Now, we might have to make a payment to the village, but I don't know how that would work with.
Well, if it's outside of a certificate area, which it will be until we close, until we get ICC approval, which probably in May. So, we're really only talking about a few months here, so anything does come forward, I'm sure we talk to Robinson. They want to hold it, we get paid on it.
Paul said we could.
Oh, maybe.
I checked with Paul, we'll double check, but I've checked with our financial guy, I thought he said that we could just accept the invoices directly.
Okay, good.
I will confirm that, but I'm pretty sure that's what the last thing I heard was.
And if not, we could talk to Robinson and say, hold them, you know, if it means, if it means a point and a half a month or something like that, we do enough work with it, I don't think they'll have an issue with it.
That would be the only cost is Robinson?
What's that?
That would be the only cost is Robinson?
Yeah, and if you have any internal costs.
Yeah, if you have any attorney, attorney fees, they view it and stuff like that, internal costs.
What about the actual acquisition cost?
It's a good question, I mean, can we pay that? I guess if we could do it, even though we don't own the certificate area, then it's not a problem, we do it. If we can't, then I guess we would ask, see if you guys would do it.
So, that would be a bang-bang thing, Jimmy, I mean, you'd know what the cost is before closing, and we would just get the money for closing.
Yeah.
For closing.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So, we're not expending any money?
No, and if you have anything out before closing, we'll apply it right to closing, get you paid right away, immediately. It's not worth your check. But if we could, it looks like our controller said we might be able to do it without it being under the certificate area, then great, they'll just pay as they come in.
You guys are handling all the negotiations and all that side of it?
We would have Robinson do that, and the easements would be made out to the village of Peatone, and then they would just be transferred over with the sale as well as the other easements and assets in town.
How come you, how come you're not going down Crawford or Corning? Well, it seems like that's a straight shot, right?
It is, but the road doesn't extend to the east of Ridgeland, so we'd have to get an easement through a farm field somewhere. And actually, I guess this guy has a driveway back to here, but there's no right of way through there, there's no road. It would just make maintenance and test, you know, we have to flush it periodically. We've been running it with all the pipelines in the area, we've been having to actually cathodically protect our lines, so if we had to have that with this, it would just be, you know, it's not as convenient, it's not next to a roadway where we can pull off and test it right away.
But it's easier to go through the subdivision than it is to come through the parkway?
Why are you coming down here?
That's what I was gonna ask, Jim, why don't you just go on the east side of the subdivision?
And it might very well, it seems like there's nothing here, probably easier.
Unless you're gonna redo the street for us, but I'm all for it.
And we do, well, when we place water mains.
These guys know that I would make them do that.
Right, and we typically do that, so whenever we.
You'd get new street.
I don't care if we move that entire subdivision.
And that is something that, you know, when we're dealing with the property, we'd look at the property owner, and if this property owner is agreeable to that, you know, that is a possibility. We just, again, we're just in the process right now of seeing what right of ways are there and.
How deep is that buried, you know, cornfield?
Deep, about four and a half feet to the top of pipe.
They can farm right over the top of it? Is there any adverse effect to the farm?
The only thing is our valves have to come to the surface, because they have to exercise those in any hydrants that we need for flushing and testing purposes, but as far as being able to farm over it, it's not going to impact it.
And if we're during the season where it's farm, they get paid for that loss of crops?
Correct, yeah, we, part of our easement is we pay them crop damages, it's usually over a three-year. We make them one-time payment, but it's over for three years of crop, so they get 100% the first year, I think it's 75 and then 50, or 50 and 25, it just depends. But we usually pay them, because it takes a couple of years for them to get full production back.
But if you cut through the field there, east of the subdivision, you could put a valve up there and then a valve down south, you wouldn't need a?
Yeah, there's a few roads that come up here that we could try to strategically place things around.
Yeah, that looks open, yeah, I mean, that's something I'd definitely look at. We're hoping too that there's what, it's possibly only one, two, three, four parcels here. Possibly five would come down here before, you guys might even know them, I'm sure. With the industry, hey, just stay, you guys, let's sit down and talk. We went through, what, 104 parcels, 107 parcels or something like that?
Yeah, well, and you're not, you're not going through township roads either, which can be a difficult task to do with township government.
Mentioned to you guys before, we.
Yeah, that did create some delays. Again, the county, it's, they have a very streamlined, straightforward process, their permits come through very quickly. In the long term, I mean, these county highways are usually the, you know, you have your state routes, and then your county roads are usually your next set of arterials. So, again, coming in on the Peatone Beecher Blacktop, that's another corridor that you guys are pricey growth on sooner than, you know, you know, maybe further out on Corning or something, so it just helps open up that as well.
That's a good point, if you're gonna develop, it's gonna be probably along here.
Right.
And we got the main there then to be able to serve anything like that.
Jim, when you talk to our Jim, on the north side of the Beecher Blacktop there, out so far, I don't think it goes a full mile, but there's a line out there, I don't know if it's. I know there's all the manholes in the ditch.
Well, you guys have water main on the south side, so it is possible the, maybe the sanitary is on the north side or something? Because your water main does go out all the way to Timber, what's that street?
I know the last manhole is by that second farmhouse on the north side.
This one?
Yeah.
So, it goes all the way out, that might be the end of it?
Yeah, we just need 10 feet of separation for EPA requirements from sanitary sewers. And depending on how deep it is, it doesn't have to be 10 feet, but we like to keep it just because of future maintenance. If you have to dig one up, you don't want to expose the other one.
So, when you talk about a 12-inch main, is that based on current population, projected population, or, I mean, do you do bigger ones?
Yeah, it, well, so what we have is we're modeling your system, and whatever we find that we need for not only current growth but expanded growth, well, we need the 24-inch that runs up to University Park, maybe, maybe not. It might be a smaller main, maybe it's 18 or 12 or something, but we haven't made a final decision yet. That's just the main that you guys have that we'd be tying into. And for you guys, again, 12-inch main can move quite a bit of water.
I think just like eight, you down the road 10 years, do you have to start tearing things up and throw a subdivision again to put a bigger main in?
No, we, we wouldn't want to, that's why we're modeling it, and we're gonna, we're gonna anticipate quite a bit of growth for the system. So, I mean, your 12-inch down there can probably push eight, nine gallons a day.
I know nothing about water.
So, it's, it's a good-sized main, it's, you know.
Well, that's about eight times more than what you're doing today, I think, I think they're at a million or less.
Right, so, well, we're gonna look at it, and we're not gonna size for today, because we know you guys want to grow, and we don't want to be back in 10 years replacing it, because then I get in trouble, so.
We have to, though, that's a really good problem, because then we get tremendous monitoring, so we hope not to. The only Commerce Commission, when we go in for this to get recovery of the spend, they're gonna say, hey, why'd you put a 24-inch when the modeling only shows you need a 12 or a 24, or a 16 or 18? So, we have to prove to them that it's within a 20-year planning horizon, and, you know, it makes sense. So, we'll pull like C-MAP numbers and say, hey, based on they projected the population to be this, so we'll get some, whatever we can to justify the increase size. And, hey, the marketing you guys are doing for economic development and things like that, so. Otherwise, they'll still shoot it down, which we've sometimes oversized stuff, because we know stuff, you know, they're looking at a piece of paper, we know what's going on out here in the region, we got our fingers on a pulse, so.
And it may require a letter from you guys stating that, you know, you have a certain number of properties that have been looked at for growth and development, and if they were to question it, I mean, we don't need it now, but, you know, we do some certificate expansions, we have to have letters from the village showing that these particular parcels have had people come in asking about development, and then they'll grant us the certificate to serve them, so.
Especially east, or the, west of the 57, that's where hopefully all the girls can hang.
Right.
We're, just bring your attention, maybe some, for some consideration, if you guys are okay with doing something like that and partnering with, and the idea is just try to expedite a little bit quicker and see if it's a few months.
I think basically, you know, anything we can do to keep it moving forward and keep it moving forward quicker, you know, we're definitely willing to do that.
And any expense that is incurred with this, obviously, if we could pay directly, definitely will, if not, we'll work out something. If it means you guys gotta maybe front a small amount, hopefully it doesn't have to be that way, we'll definitely take care of it at closing.
And whenever you're ready to, I mean, to start talking, you know, to the property owners, I mean, if Robinson needs anything from us, you know, we'll definitely work with them, whoever's doing the acquisition.
Well, we've ordered title, I said, we've ordered title searches, so that usually is a couple of week process, but once we have that, we'll know if there is right of way or not. We'll also, you know, our property owner data, and this is based off GIS, the title search will be more accurate, it's usually the same, but, but, yeah, we'll, we'll have them turn them loose and try to get these parcels as quick as we can, because once we have the parcel identified, we can actually start the design work.
If everything goes really, really well, we could be done by the end of 18, I mean, a lot of things.
Yes, I can promise, honestly, Craig and I were talking about it, and we were both thinking, you know, hey, if we got to jump on it, that would be ideal, but we can't promise it again, just easements can be sticky sometimes.
Hello?
Hello.
Yo, Greg will just leave this for you guys, too.
Because it doesn't have to leave it. Property owners' names and stuff, and that way.
If you need more information, we'll get it to you.
If we have to go through the subdivision, we need a lot of pre-notification. We gotta let these residents know that this is gonna be happening, approximate dates, just so they got it on their radar.
Yes.
Because as we know, we've run into it before, where we come in and everybody forgot, you know, and then they start digging up the street, and then, Bill, they got a line out here of, why are you digging up my street?
Oh, so the 12 over here.
Any pre-education we can do would be great, so.
Yep, and again, once, we'll have a lot better, once we start figuring out the property owners and the design, we'll be able to give you guys a pretty accurate schedule of how things will go.
Just, but I mean, I'm gonna want to let our, our hangers to the residents, you know, letting them know that this is happening approximately two weeks from today or whatever, okay?
Yeah, well.
The more informed they are, the better off we all are, trust me.
I can say, once, once we get the property owner's situation figured out, I mean, it's a 45-day, once the, then we can start the design, even when the design's done, it's a 45-day review period at the EPA, so, I mean, we'll have months and months of advanced warning for the residents, and then, you know, before the project starts, we have to send out letters about the whole lead law, we have to notify the residents, not that we're gonna be tapping onto their mains or anything, but just the disturbance in that can disrupt sediment in the pipes and stuff, so.
Can we get, any questions?
So, on the side note, I was with somebody talking legislation today, I think it's just gonna solidify, you guys made the right decision this spring, and it might take two years to get done, but it's gonna get done, there's gonna be a piece of legislation that's gonna require municipalities to basically rid of all lead in your system in 10 years. Sounds like a lot of time, but most of the lead's not even on your system, I mean, it's the laterals. I'm sure Frankfurt, everybody else is gonna deal with this. They're gonna wanna have to do true cost of service studies, rate studies, listing of all of the capital improvements that are needed, and a plan of how you're gonna take corrective action. So, environmental groups are pushing this, and it's gonna create a lot of burden, a heavy financial burden on almost every municipality in the state for this. How does Chicago do that? It's gotta be gazillion dollars, I don't know.
This is what New Jersey just passed, right?
They're modeling off of New Jersey, yeah. And that wall will be fall on us, we have to, we'll have to do it. It's not just municipal bill, anybody, if that's a public utility, so.
Jimmy, do you see anywhere down the road or a program where, because obviously our stuff ends at the curb, basically, or your stuff will end at the curb, that residents, is there gonna be anything out there for residents in the future that you can see coming in the horizon to help them retrofit there? Because we got homes out here that are 70, 80 years old, that obviously are gonna have some lead piping, especially underground. You know, I mean.
We're seeing.
The unintended consequences of all these laws, and that's one of them, that how are you gonna tell a 70-year-old woman that, you know, her whole 70 feet of pipe underground is lead, and she has to replace it, and it's gonna cost her $9,000, you know?
I agree.
It's a lot of money.
I would think that they're gonna mandate that, they're gonna have to come up with some sort of grant program or superlance or loan that has a scale of income with it, I would sure hope they would.
Yeah.
We're even seeing the only Commerce Commission starting to look at their bylaws, I guess, that they see it's coming to where the public utilities like ourselves are gonna have to do this. Right now, we can't recover it, it's not our pipe, we can't fix it. But we're seeing them look at, hey, what if we do allow these utilities to do, to pay for that and throw it into rates? I have a feeling it's gonna kind of come to that, where the utilities, the municipality or a public utility like ourselves is probably gonna be paying for it, and it's just gonna get built into the overall pricing.
Sure, a lot of people can't, and, you know, so, one of the things, too, again, the EPA current laws, if we do come across a lead surface, whether it's ours, if it's ours, we replace it immediately, whether it be a gooseneck or the whole line. If it's the customer's side, we have to fill out, we still have to fill out a form, we notify them, actually, we notify them of either side of it, ours or theirs is lead. And then every year, we have to follow up with them, just to find out, we have to keep a database of it, even though it's not ours. And every year, we call, contact the property owners to see, you know, if they've switched it out or if they still have it, so. That way, you know, if somebody moves and they didn't know they had a lead line, well, every year, we contact them, so. And, you know, our water is what I'll call unreactive, it, over time, leaves a very thin lime coating in the pipes, so that helps with, if somebody does have a lead line, it does coat it. You know, the Flint, Michigan water was reactive, meaning it actually tried to, it would pull minerals out of the pipes to try to neutralize itself, so ours actually leaves a very thin deposit, so it does help people if they happen to have lead solder or lead lines, because lead solder's, that was around a lot longer than my pipe was.
Is that the homeowner's responsibility from Buffalo Box to the house?
Yes.
And from the street to the Buffalo Box?
Yep. Yeah, the curb stop is our limit, and usually we'll go a foot cast it, just because it's attached to their line, and we want to make sure that ours, you know, is copper through there.
Like at my house, the Buffalo Box is actually inside the sidewalk, probably 20 feet from the curb, 15 feet from the curb?
If it's, is the sidewalk right off the right of way, or is it?
There's a parkway that's probably, I don't know, 15 feet in the sidewalk, and then my Buffalo Box is inside of that, about 30 feet.
Honestly, if it's in the sidewalk and they replace it, they'll probably replace it not in the sidewalk, but we try to get as close to the property line as we can, so it just depends on much room is behind it. You know, if it's six inches from the property line, they'll probably put it in front of the sidewalk, but if there's a couple of feet, they'll probably put it on the backside at the property line.
And then when you put that in, from the Buffalo Box to the house, you do it like the gas company, you know, they punched a hole right at the curb, and then, what they call it, line boring or something? And they, underground and came up right at the meter, is that the way the water works, too?
It all depends, so if we replace a water main next to an old one, we'll just intercept those surfaces and tie them right into the new main, so we won't even pull new lines through. The ones on the far side, we'll either extend it, or depending on the condition, we'll pull new ones, if they're steel or lead, we'll replace them entirely.
But my point being, do you get it over the trencher and plow up the yard, or do you zip it through and then pop it up?
We'll generally drill it, so what, in a lot of cases, because if we're replacing a line, we'll just connect the new one to the old one, and they pull the new one, and it just, or they pull on the old one, it just brings the new one right through. We really try not to, things never go well when you have to restore people's yards, never.
And what's the new pipe being done, is it a polymer or?
We generally use copper. There are a couple of places where the soil is so corrosive to metals that we actually have to use plastic, but our standard is copper.
Then how big of a line is that to the house?
It really depends, most of the time, it's a 1-inch line, but if you have a really large house, so the plumbing code dictates the size of the line to your house as well as your meter. It depends on your number of fixtures, and if you have an irrigation system, outside spigots are the biggest contributor, because those are 5-gallon a minute fixtures, whereas your bathrooms and stuff may be only, you know, one, one and a half gallons a minute. So, the plumbing code, the homeowner is supposed to tell us what they have, we fill out the spreadsheet, and it tells us what size meter, what size line to install, it also depends on how far. In town, most homes are close, so it doesn't matter. We, I did a 20-mile job in limestone, we had to run 2-inch services to some houses, because they were a quarter mile off the road. So, it just depends, but most of the time, it's gonna be a 1-inch line with a 3/4-inch meter, that's your standard residential.
Anything else? Well, thank you, guys, for the.
Thank you.
And, yeah, keep us, yeah, keep us posted, and definitely more than willing to do what we can to keep things moving forward.
Great, getting closer, so it would be a lot more interaction with Greg and St. Great, getting close, so we'll be a lot more interaction with Greg and staff and getting closer, so our transition meetings are speeding up, we have internally, but now we bring in both parties and you guys, you'll be sick of hearing us.
Very good.
But it's cool, we're getting close, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Anything else for the committee of the whole?
I was talking to Mark Mosch, he leased the property on Wilmington Road, where the billboard is, where it used to be for the Piattone Bank.
Okay.
And he wondered, obviously he wants to, whatever, he wondered what he needs to do with the village to, can you just go ahead and start putting up a billboard? I mean, using the existing billboard, just basically recover, but he's leased that, now he owns the, owns the billboard, but leases from the railroad.
Where's it, where's it at?
If you're coming down Wilmington Road, right before you get to the railroad tracks, the bank used to have a...
Right at West Street.
Yeah.
Okay, right at, right at West.
Yeah, they have an arrow to the Piattone Bank. Anyway, he wanted to know what he needed to do, or if he needed to do anything.
What, is he putting a lighted board on there, or...
I think he's gonna use the...
Because they called about a change of our copy, they can't do off-site advertising there, that's what they wanna do. We have ordinance against off-site advertising.
What's off-site advertising?
In other words, if you have a business here and you wanna advertise here, you can't do that, you have to stay on your property. That was part of the problem, that was same-day tease, they wanted to do all kinds of off-site advertising, too. Makes it tough. A lot of towns have that ordinance, and we ask, we actually do that, too.
Is that billboard being used at this point, you know, I don't even know?
It was for the, I think it was for the bank, it was for the bank.
It was for the bank?
It was their property sign, so that's, if somebody went into the property there, they'd wanna use the sign, I would think.
Well, that's...
Yeah, we have to look at it.
I guess he asked me to find out, what to, what does he need to do? Does he need to come in, or...
Probably be best for him to come in and talk to Greg.
Another question he had was, you know how we own the easement from Wilmington Road to the 57?
All the way around.
The railroad, the railroad. Do we own the easement from Wilmington Road out to Route 50?
I think just a ratchey, or, yes, ratchey, don't we, behind Casey's?
Okay. I was trying to...
There's one little parcel that isn't ours, but the rest of it, I think is...
I think through...
Somebody put a garage on it or something.
Because he had a question, that he may be interested in, in allowing, pursuing a billboard on Route 50 on that easement.
I have a billboard.
He was talking about this, maybe a lip, tangible...
Probably best if he comes in and sits down and has a conversation with Greg and...
There's state law to it, because it's a state route. So you've gotta be...
Goes by all the contact...
Or get a...
It's quite a process, but...
Because the state limits a lot of those billboards, too. That's, that's part of the problem with, the one you're talking about on 57 is the state, because of the federal route, or the state route actually, once it's in Illinois, they limit the number of billboards per square mile. And if we have businesses that are gonna be right there and they need the signage, it's hard to grant signage to somebody else that takes up that, that area. So that's something that we really gotta look at real hard, to make sure that we don't cut our own, you know, noses off to spite our faces. Because you're gonna want, whatever businesses go there, you're gonna want them to be able to have signage, that's gonna be the key to it, and they're gonna want it, too, so. Especially the one that DeMar and I have talked to, that was his, first thing he asks is, am I gonna be able to have signage on 57, so? And he's right there where you're talking, so...
Well, I'll guide him to come in and talk to you.
Yeah.
He's, but he's been in this business for years, and he knows about all these regulations and state approvals, there's only certain locations...
Is he outdoor?
No.
No.
Okay.
Steve, that house on Corning, down here, do we know who's...
Yes, we talked to him today.
Okay.
They're supposed to bring in, bring out the old dumpster, bring in a new dumpster.
I mean, I'm all for it, I'm cleaning it up and...
It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be cleaned up tomorrow, that was, that was...
I stopped there.
It looked pretty bad yesterday. Secondly, Chief will be here tonight, I'll talk to him about it, but can they up the, can you mention it to him if I don't seem to start patrolling Ratchey Road again? Seems like ever since that radar came down, I'm telling you, they're flying. Okay.